Yeah, no.
Are you ready for this?
I'm not ready for Tuesday.
Bobby?
Oh.
Are lovely. No, are we... You guys gonna put that down, Mr. Beadie?
Um, I think we can. If you can make it, yeah, you can put time down for that.
You're officially doing it.
You're representing the school board there.
I'm not gonna do the morning one on the six.
No, I'm not either. I have therapy.
And now I have to do the list.
Yeah.
Uh, seventeen.
Here's the staff release.
What do you mean, consider that special meeting?
Uh, super superintendent. Yeah, I'll put it under other.
Yeah, well, everybody got other.
Uh.
I think that's canceled.
Okay. One, two, and?
Hey, guys, I've had so much fun doing this and listening to our try to treat a little chief.
Yeah.
After us being a little stressed.
You're coming down the days.
We're missing a page. Um.
Oh, check the box over there.
Check that box, and then he just under.
Oh, I have two here. Do I have two? I have two.
Oh, I better. I have quite a lot.
Laurie is right there. I'm sorry.
There's a time part in that box.
Okay.
No, I don't have that on my other page.
No, but you.
Between normal stuff and this. And you're getting all some deep information.
I, I know. I think I thought it was.
All right, here's this. That's the last of them. Six. Six or five.
But we need to ask, since we have written the bills for last month, we have to ask, have you did that?
We should be able to thank the members.
Our tenants, okay, so then Sandy can add them up here for.
Yeah, everybody's.
Yeah.
Yeah, since it was so close, we can move on.
Yeah, a little off.
Yeah, a little off.
A million bucks, yeah. Yeah, when I read that, I was like, ooh. That's a big.
Don't be like him.
Yeah, that would get a little carried.
The funny part was, of course, you know, she was giving him all some grief as far as she automatically expected that. That's not right, they want to take their.
Ronnie, Ronnie.
Oh, she's sending totally expected that. I can't believe Ronnie did get that.
It's a pretty slick, but the driving through it.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't get it.
I, I, I'm actually, I did not. I was on, uh.
Yeah, so it's, um, it's been good.
I had nothing going on, uh, which is hard.
We got a fine statement.
And I was sure. Yes.
Yeah.
Question, did we ever get a new pick up?
Yeah.
We did some of that, you call out that and then I was.
You got back order. Two. Two, one. I got back order, but I was supposed to leave here last November. Uh, but they just continued to do that. Yeah, I forgot that. So.
Twenty-one, but I thought it was supposed to show me probably.
Yeah. So between you and I, it's, uh, I don't think, uh, James is having much luck. So I think between you and I talking to Mark.
There it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're live, yeah.
Okay, uh, it's not quite yet. All right, call this meeting order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Also, read our school district mission statement. In partnership with communities, the mission of the Dorflandenfeld School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong members. Uh, all board members are present tonight, as well as Superintendent Tegason, Principal LeParr, Churchley Villa, um, our tech director, John Jacobson, and Community Director Tracy Hilson. Now, we have visitor, uh, new school board member that's coming next month, and, uh, not going to be, no one's resting the board tonight. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh.
I'm gonna go with Sandy. Is there a second? Second by David. All in favor of the eye?
Eye.
Eye. Close. Motion carries. All right, I feel like we have more practice here than three weeks. All right, so no public comments. Um, we have a very special rebel recognition tonight. Um, Sandy is going to be done after sixteen years, looking at this, January first, two thousand and five. Wow.
Where is it?
Wow. Um, yeah, I just, I'm amazed by you, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank, I know all of us here are in awe of you and your commitment. I'm gonna cheer you up. Um, thank you for your service, really. Seriously, she has put up with us and taught us a lot. And I want to thank Bob. Bob, if you're watching, I know my husband, sometimes you're a school board member's wife or husband, and, um, you watch your family member spit some car in the, um, in the garage, and well, what the heck, are you guys gonna come in, we're gonna put the kids to bed and eat, and you're like, starting ten more minutes, and it's an hour later, so. Bob, thank you, thank you to your five kids, and, um, now you're gonna have every Monday night, I'm gonna sit and think about you. I bet Sandy's living a nice supper, and she's actually there on time, not seeing, I'm gonna miss someone for her day. So anyway, huge thank you. I'm gonna waddle over to you here. And thank you for Tracy, for getting us organized. So there you go, so you can get it from that. All right.
Something that I want to say, just, um, working here for ten years, um, Sandy's one of, Sandy is the last of the board members that I worked with since the iron. And, um, worked with Sandy, um, you know, the different offices that she served on the board, and, and one thing that I am a board chair, and it's been a, it's been a journey. It's been, um, uh, it's, it's, it's been, uh, I, I, I love talking about lifetime learning, and I, I really feel like, this has been one of those journeys that's been so rewarding, because watching, and I think reflecting back and, and seeing growth, uh, with both, both of us as far as coming common, because we had common vision of all kids. And, and so it's been so rewarding, and I say that as I have chills right now. It's been so rewarding for me as a superintendent, so I, I have great admiration and appreciation for you. Thank you.
All right.
Be like a big sister.
I am a younger sister.
Yes. Not as long as I try to keep that in.
All right, any other rebel recognition? As always, we want to thank our staff, we want to thank our teachers, our administrators, everybody that works to help these students in the building in this crazy, crazy time. Hopefully today was a step in the right direction for our country, and, uh, we'll hopefully see what this vaccination can do. Maybe my next summer will, hopefully by this summer, I don't know. Uh, we'll see what happens. But anyway, thank you to everybody, um, thank you to your parents, uh, for all the work that you do with your students, so. All right, we have reports. Ronnie's favorite time of the year is six point one, truth and taxation report. Here we go.
So, a couple of things that, um, everybody has received the actual final levy. Uh, besides that, and I can't pass up this moment of being able to. And this time actually, it's, it's, it's looked more relevant, um, maybe if you'd do me a favor or weigh in, trace, somebody, uh, because I've got enough copies for the rest of you guys, you know, you just get enough copies, everybody here, and this one. So. Again, the levy, you've seen the levy sheets, um, you know, the, the levy is actually, um, as far as from the school standpoint, uh, as a taxing agent, we're not seeing a lot of changes, uh, with it. Uh, when you, when you look going from three point nine nine to a little over four million, that's not a large increase. Um, so you can see the trend over, over the last, we actually have this, and you, you actually have all of this available to you as, as board members. Um, one thing I want to point out to you, on the first of the sheets where it shows a levy eight, uh, report, you'll notice that when it shows fiscal twenty-one, um, if you look at the basic ed, that looks a lot higher than the other years. And that was an overestimation. So I want, I want you to be aware of that. You know, that, that happened, let's say, I'm just gonna say, we, we've had changes in the district office. Okay, that's all been corrected. It didn't have anything to do with what, but when you look at the basic ed eight, that's completely based on how many people units you're entering into the system. And, and there was, uh, some overestimations that were done. Like I said, it's been corrected, but I didn't want to, I wanted to be, uh, as open about it. I didn't want to make a change to show what wasn't on that sheet, because that was what was on the sheet at the time. So we've corrected, and all the payments are back in for the budget the way it should be. Um, but it's, so if you get, when you're looking at it, I'm gonna save you a phone call, if you look at, you go, Jesus, that looks like it's five hundred thousand dollars more. It's because the, uh, the estimates were entered in for, I think, about eighteen hundred people units, including preschool, which we don't have eighteen hundred people units, and we've got sixteen hundred students. Then you take high school kids, what else not, but, um, you know, this is part of the tran- transition when you have multiple people working on your three things. And so, uh, now that I've had the opportunity to go back and be a little bit more into the fiscal, um, I, I want to make sure that we've got this down there. So again, that's, that's really the big one on the basic ed eight, but if you look at the levy itself, um, and especially the second sheet, it shows you, um, what, what a lot of people, if I get phone calls on this, it's typically the voter compared to the non-voter. And of course, the big change on the voter compared to non-voter is based on the fact that we got a successful bond, uh, approval. And you can see that with, uh, uh, the general fund all of a sudden, um, going, you know, where you see some of the increases going into the debt service, the voter approved NTC, um, so that went from fiscal year twenty, so it's in that third set of, in the general debt, the NTC, which is, of course, on our complete net tax capacity. So, just as a refresher reminder to everybody and anyone who's new to this, if you're doing and operating an excess operating levy and asking voters for approval, that will be on the R and B. But if you're actually going to voters where it's gonna be on all tax pro- taxable property, that's net tax capacity. And so when we did the, the bond, um, that was passed in November of two thousand twenty, you can see the big difference on general debt. NTC voter approved went from seven hundred thirteen thousand to two point two million. So that's the big, that's the big change. Any questions on this? You know, so many of the things are, again, I'm giving you the abbreviated one tonight because so many of you have done through this before, but you can see which things have been phased out, because I put those in, in the grade. Uh, for instance, uh, student achievement, that no longer is leviable. Uh, the same thing for the referendum. You made a decision, and you had that opportunity to switch things over from referendum to voter approved to L O R, local optional revenue. Um, some of you, and, um, I know Mr. O'Keefe isn't here tonight, but he, he picked up on the fact that M R E A had a report, and you may have seen that, that, uh, M R E A, a, a committee that was formed, looked at doing local educational revenue instead of L O R, L E R, because in education, we love acronyms. Uh, so you're gonna hear more about that through M S B A over the coming year or two. Uh, and basically what that would do, if they go to L E R, is right now we have seven forty-two in L O R. So you have your tier one at three hundred, and then the additional four forty-two. Anything over seven forty-two creates a different equalization. And I've never recommended that, nor would I, because you don't get as much aid, and we've been able to make it work at seven forty-two. Now, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but M R E A, of course, is looking at, they would like to see, their, the recommendation is for twenty percent of the foundation money to be L E R at sixteen hundred and some dollars per people unit. Now, you think about that going from seven forty-two to sixteen hundred and some. That would have a huge tax. It would be looked at differently because of the equalization, it changed the equalization factors on it. Um, but again, this is something I, I'm just, I would, I would say, just be aware, that's gonna be the next move, is to move a certain back. Instead of just having the six thousand something per people unit, automatically giving every school district an L E R opportunity as a school board to put so much into L E R and still get, and by the way, we want to raise the people unit up to eight thousand something. So this is a little bit of pipe dream public, it's not gonna happen, but again, this is just what they're throwing out just to get things better. So I want you to at least be aware of it. When you see the L E R, it's just a new acronym, it's a new process, um, but it's taking, instead of six thousand, if you look at ours, at six thousand something plus seven forty, we're not even at seven thousand. They want to look at ten thousand something for the school district. That'd be a nice pipe dream. It's a lot of money. It's over six hundred and some thousand dollars for us, so just be aware. Um, these things change over the course of my time being an administrator. I've seen them come and go as far as some of the equalizations, and they, they'll continue to do that. Um, I, I, I would think for any new board members coming on, uh, you know, it's so critical to be able, I'm a strong believer that you need to have a good understanding of the difference between what's being taxed, where, where's the, who's gonna get the broncos. And so, um, this board has heard me say many times, and Sandy's heard it the most of anybody here, but every time I bring up R and B compared to, you know, net tax capacity, because it affects different, uh, landlords very, very much similar, and you, and you need to at least understand those differences. And I'd be more than happy if a work session just going over that stuff. Anybody have any questions on this?
What, it would not be that one night, single paid with the M, I gave, send a increase in each category with this and that. So it's not a problem because we have the wrong year, uh, last year's.
Say that one again, I missed.
On, uh, we used to have a nice single page towards the end of this levy that had like the percentage increase in the two, three different categories.
Uh, and so out of the levy sheets, you got that one single page, and then, um, the ones to sign, which I think, okay, Ronnie, tell me if this is the one you're looking.
I didn't see any other stuff except me either. Usually it's like, I think, thirty-nine or forty-one or something like that.
Yeah, and that's getting on levy sheets I sent, I emailed over.
I didn't see it, not given percentages.
Um, I can't tell you offhand which page number it was, but it's, so the overall percent change, I believe, was, was one, one percent. But, um, that's the one, I think, I think that's the one you're looking. It's just same ones. This is the one that gets turned into the state. The other one's on page, I believe, I think it's thirty-four or thirty-five of the levy sheets that were sent out that show based on, here's all the categories, and here is the overall, um, this one only shows for this year, and it doesn't show the comparison to fiscal, fiscal year nineteen payable twenty compared to twenty payable twenty-one. And I don't have those levy sheets, but that's one of the.
Do the percentages on these two columns, right?
But you can do that. That's one of the, if you just take, if, if you look at the total of comparing the four million thirty-one, four million thirty-one thousand, and if somebody's got a calculator.
Just the three million nine ninety.
Exactly, and I'll tell the percent increase.
It's four one thousand, not almost four millions, it's probably a little over one percent.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's one of the lowest ones we've had for one, so.
Yeah, that shows that the voter went down percentage wise and non-voter, but we have some.
And that's why, that's why I wanted to show this, that's one of the reasons I would show this trend one, is because, um, that, that sheet, that, uh, page thirty-six or whatever it is in the levy sheets only show the overall, but it doesn't show what the percents are by each of those categories, or this way you could, you can look at, see, how much did the voter go up compared to the non-voter? And we, you know, those who've been around for a while know, there was a trend where all of a sudden, things were taken out of voters' hands and moved directly over to board having authority. So this has been a big change over the years.
And somebody did ask me the land or their taxes, their estimates they got mail, that would include this bond increase right through to buildings?
Yes, and actually, and actually, the, the, the last, what they were actually paying in two thousand twenty taxes should have already shown that increase, because the original one that they received back in November of last year, it didn't happen because it wasn't voter approved yet, but when they got their tax statements in March, that should have shown that nice little increase. Other questions? This is the time for anybody in the public, this is the one time in the school board meeting where the public actually gets asked questions, because the truth of taxation can't stretch out to school.
Since I just clarified, this last column here is the same thing we're sort of applying to bill sheets.
Exactly.
All right, any further questions?
Mr. Jacobson, you were owning all these different pieces of property and what else? No questions?
No questions.
I think actually, most of my land and stuff went down a hundred, two percent on average, but there's a lot of things that go with that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, the evaluations for a lot of upward thing.
All right, six point two world's best workforce. We've got Margot and Vinnie on that. Wherever you want to stand. Why don't you go more towards there so they can hear you, because the microphone's up by the television there?
All right, so this is, um, Andy, we'll get to do this every year, so we're just reporting on our world test workforce and human integration status. Now this year, when we, we go over some of the stuff, it's gonna be null and void, because, um, Minnesota Department of Education this year gave us the option. Uh, if we could not, you know, because it usually says goal met, goal on track, uh, goal not met. Because we did not E F C A reporting or testing this year, a lot of our goals, our SMART goals, we both with percentages, we could not, um, we could not, uh, analyze to see if we went there. So a lot of it's gonna be, and it's gonna be really quick, because of a lot of it, because of hold, and we weren't able to report on. Um, so the world test workforce again is kind of a combination of goals for schools, goals for districts, um, plus in that looking at the bigger image, the big picture of who we're hiring, um, who comes, who goes to our school, who has, say, in intervention services and E O support and those kinds of things. Um, so I think you've got, you've got this, um, somewhere along the way. This is not the form we were, we submitted to, and we, it went in a survey. So it looks a lot prettier this than this, and as we were working, I'm like, okay, let's, we got this. Um, so part of this is an advisory committee, so what, what we did as an admin team, we have, um, our site leadership teams, or first five and twelve leadership teams. We just sent it out to a few people on each, from each site on the teams to make sure that they look it over, to give us the thumbs up, and, and we've got, um, we've got no, um, feedback that, oh, anything needs to change. So, um, going on, one of the first parts is the district's. So going on, one of the first parts is the district's obligation to look at how we hire people and how we, how we hire people to match the people that we have coming to our school. We have people in charge that look like our kids, we have those same values and cultures and those kinds of things. And looking at, you know, what we're doing at the district level, you know, we're really focusing on advertising in a lot of different spots to get, you know, all the candidates, the candidates that need these recommended procedures and protocols for hiring. We do admit, you know, we're in small, a smaller town, we're not as, as high with our cultural diversity in our, in our staff as we want to be, but we are always brought to be looking for, you know, teachers of color and teachers that match what our students look like and where they come from. So again, that's just one part of this. It asks us that question, what are we doing as a district? And then the next piece of, this are the goals. And again, like I have said before, there's a lot of them we're unable to report. The first three are kind of centered around the elementary piece. The first one is all students are ready for school. So what we do is we provide a goal and last year we provided the, you know, our district home crease percentage children's grade between the third and fourth grade, so for early childhood kiddos, to forty-five percent by the school year two thousand twenty. So we want to make sure we are incorporating those forty-five percent of our community that's ready for school into school. We could not, because of protocols, because of people choosing to not send their kiddos because they don't have to this year with COVID, the numbers would be very skewed. So we selected unable to report that. Again, with a lot of fidelity with our data, we report with all the things, the factors that went into COVID, people, people keeping their kiddos out of that early childhood program, we were unable to report if we had met that goal or not. The second one is also means already in third grade achieving literacy goal. And we had said that in our reading, our state assessments and readings, our M C As for our third, third graders would improve from sixty-three point eight percent in two thousand nineteen to seventy-one point eight percent in two thousand twenty. Again, no testing that's done, so we were marked unable to report for that. I have looked at both elementary sites with our star data, looking at K through fives of DARPA progress monitoring, our in-house assessments. I was very, very pleased and very, I am very pleased to say that honestly, between, our last test was January of two thousand twenty, so way before pandemic mode. And then our last test was September, and some, some teachers have gone on tests before that or after that. But the numbers, the data shows that the kiddos have not lost a lot of schooling. I know that was an anxiety amongst us as leaders, amongst us as community parents. That data shows that our kids retained or even got, raised higher more, more academic achievement from that January point to coming back to school in September. Was very, very pleased. And I looked at the data past whole sites. And a lot of, a lot stands out in a lot of our community, our leaderships are really strong with just some of those type percentages as well. And then the, the next goal is about closing the achievement gaps. Of course, we have a percentage we have to start with and we want to make, you know, one, two and a half percent gain in those percentages. We looked at the pre-reduced population, we looked at special ed. And then because Blenheim Falls in elementary was a targeted school with the achievement and integration piece, which will be excluded second, we looked at Hispanic math reading and attendance. And again, all of those we were unable to report because they are specifically with the state assessments, the M C A assessments. So I think those are great levels. All right, the next part, and by the way, Margot and I are pulling that to the district, so I kind of oversee the six to twelve G, oversee the pre, eight to five. And there will be, right now the plan is going to state assessments this spring. I presented a webinar today after school and it looks like we're moving forward. What that will look like, I don't know, so. It'll be interesting. They said to keep patient with them, they tried to figure things out and I thought to myself how many times I've said that this year. So I have to be patient like, like that. So the next part is all students career in college, ready for graduation. And so, you know, these goals have, have really been the same for a couple of years on purpose. Because that is what we are focusing on, we're focusing in how do, how our students can college and be ready. And there's different ways, different pockets that will do that to both of the sites. And this goal was somewhat measurable. We were able to measure this because we did last April before we shut down, we were able to accomplish a lot of the goal points on that. So I would say for the most part, we met that goal last year. And that, and then there was some period of things that happened outside of April and May time and even this fall, virtual things that they've offered and things. So that made me happy about it. And I'm not going to disclose, but you can see some of the things that are out there. The other piece is add a strategy in classes to promote college integrityness. Again, I think that that is something that we were able to sustain and implement. We're off to a slower start this year just because we're trying to slow down and not put so much on our teachers with additional P Ds and those type of things, because they really are just trying to hold their head above the water right now. And so we are somewhat kind of sustaining that right now. We're not going backwards, but we're not jumping leaps forward either, just to be honest with you. But last year based on the report, we felt that we were on track with that. I'm excited about the college integrityness that we're focusing on, grade six to twelve. It's really exciting to see some of the things that are happening. Especially with the career center, with the Mormon area public schools, our students are going to have some great opportunities. It's not everyone will talk more about that here at the board, but it's pretty exciting things that are happening. I was able to meet with Brian last weekend, was able to share a little more of the show. So I think that we are on the right track, we're, we're preparing our students for the future. I think we're also going to get a lot of kids really excited about different things. And anytime you can get them excited, engaged, you're moving in the right direction. The last goal that I wanted to report on, I mean, the other thing, I was asking this before, I apologize. But the D G S high school will maintain a graduation rate of ninety-two percent or higher. So I went on, looked at the Department of Ed website and it said the data was unavailable at the time that we did that. So again, when our data is available, we'll, we'll report that, but at this time we weren't able to. In two thousand, nineteen, we were ninety-one point two percent. So again, kind of trying to stay around that ninety-two percent or higher. I think the next part, Margot, is achievement and integration. Yes, so achievement and integration is a three-year plan. We wrote the plan, this is, this is our third year with this plan, Brian, do you remember? Eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, no, second year with this plan. Second year with this plan. Then we wrote it, it was a grant from the state, you can, you can kind of hook up with other school districts surrounding. And we had Morehead and D G S actually worked together with this grant. And it's a grant to fund some intervention services, it's a grant to, to fund underserved kiddos, it's a grant to, you know, provide a little bit more to the schools. And again, a lot of our goals revolve around our district population with math, reading and attendance. Just because that was where we were seeing to be the most improvement with our kiddos. So again, we look at, we've set some goals, either achievement integration or teacher equality goals. It goes back to again, looking at who's teaching our kids, how they're teaching and then how they're integrating the standards. So the first goal here for achievement integration was the subset of the Hispanic population served forty-three to one point five, one point five years on the M C A assessments. And of course, as an achievement goal, we were unable to report on that because of the state assessments. The second goal was our Hispanic population on math. And again, that was an achievement goal. And again, we were unable to report on that because of our lack of Minnesota state assessment scores. And then our, our third was the integration. So thinking about strategies on how to measure that integration piece with intervention services and E L services, special ed services and all of those services, how do we put it together as a whole? And if we talk a little bit about how, you know, what our plan is with utilizing this money into the intervention services and the special services so we can get the help that our kiddos need. And then it just talks about our impact regarding distance learning and it was, you know, a lot of it was the strategies of learning, the having to go into uncharted territory as our teacher, having to make sure we have, build open sources for our kids, technology, those kinds of things. So again, we, we've learned a lot. There've been a lot of impacts for distance learning, some positive, some negative. I think we've learned a lot about ourselves, but the lack of resources, you know, was kind of that main struggle to get, especially at that, the elementary level. For that distance learning piece, we just didn't have the, the technology piece to get everything we could have to those levels. And I think, you know, with our plan this year, we do, have a, have a plan, know a lot better than we reported before. And then the last piece that you'll notice is the racially identifiable school D G S are not qualified for that, so they didn't have to fill out the report. And I think we are done. Questions for us? Really exciting stuff. I know, Ronnie's saying my part, taxation and then world best workforce, all the money.
I think it's the main top of graduation rate, what is that based on?
The graduation rate, what is that based on?
Is it based on number of ninth graders that were enrolled and then? I mean, like class? Right, but I mean, is it either from the ninth grade you start with, or is it from seniors that serve us and, yeah, you have to measure all of them.
So you think the number of kids that were in ninth grade, does the number drive away by time of seniors? Yeah, that's a good question. So if you started with one hundred and ten, but you have like two or whatever.
And some of those kids, I mean, it doesn't really matter where they go, they could end up in a different district or environment, right?
Yeah. I have a number that follows them in eighth grade. I did check it today, but last Thursday when we were looking at what's coming, I don't know, but it's, I'm not right now. But it has been submitted to M D E D that survey, so it looks really pretty. And I mean, I got to present it tonight, our team worked really hard with it.
Thank you, ladies.
Yes, thank you, absolutely.
All right, six point three board committee reports. Who's, I haven't had a meeting in forever.
Well, I'm most of the meeting, but thanks to Jace, the committee, the policy committee, very motivating. I do have a little bit to report. They have a busy meeting. They did talk about N Q displays, I think those are the new displays that are replacing the current boards. They're doing pilot of that right now. So it sounds like it's going very well. Right now, there's a discussion on public email capacity. And this really centers around currently certain restrictions based on email access. And we really, there was no action taken on that to loosen up those standards. There's a move to have some hardware for staff. And that, that is, it's just, but it's in the education process right now. They looked at granting parents, parents of the district's access to Gold Garden, which allows them to see websites their children are monitoring. So they're going to look into that. And there's a few other things that I won't go into that.
Is there any?
All good. Actually, there is, I got a call from the vendor this afternoon. So the Chromebooks that we ordered in June, they figured it, they got a notice from Lenovo, so they're expected to deliver on Christmas Eve or Christmas down. I'm happy to hear that. They should be in states and all feel better when they are in our hands. So that literally just happened, just this afternoon.
How many devices are there?
We have, it's about a hundred and fifty student Chromebooks will be coming in next week. And then tomorrow morning, the COVID money with some of the, the Windows, you know, devices, that should be arriving tomorrow morning. We begged, borrowed, we brought back to life, old Chromebooks, we may not work, so this will give us a little, little green in the form of the year.
Thank you. You know, Lauren had a wellness meeting.
I did have a wellness meeting and a lot of, I guess I, I usually, I try to like schedule six minutes and be kind of more organized and I forgot at home. So now I'm looking at my chicken scratch from the meeting. But a couple of highlights, Chelsea presented and they received the grabbing gold card that they would need after. They were excited about that. Chelsea has also partnered with a couple local partners for the farm school program. And Karen Schiff asked Chelsea to present to other groups, which they were also impressed with. So I think Chelsea could be presenting even later this month on that. There were a couple of students, a couple of seniors that, I think Ashton was on the call, she was on her razor. And they touched on the anti-ba movement program, but not too much has really been done with that. But they're hoping to make more progress on this trend. Going to try and get, you know, obviously, they're graduating, they get a couple others who expect to be over. And they said they have a couple people in mind for that. The elementary snack program. I know I can speak on that last time when I was asked that, they're hoping to add that to the piece from parents. Waiting for that in the beginning of the school year because there are a lot of people that aren't tuning into that. I know I got reminded of that today, so I think they were sending out reminders to parents now and then again, they'll do that in March. A lot of, a lot of time is spent on the wellness policy that our school has. So that was a whole of our call and about what needs to be updated or suggested. So I know that's not, you know, the policy committee about, you know, kind of how that, is that something that you would read once this is implemented, the policy committee needs to look at the suggestions and that, call that, roll out the words.
You need to wait until policy committee meeting, once you inform committees. Or if you want, if there was a necessity to get it sooner, it could be something that could go up to everybody and we just send out to the whole school board. From my understanding was that there wasn't anything that was, like you gotta get this because of a meeting.
Oh, right, sure.
So I would suggest wait until end committees in January and then we call a committee meeting.
Well, and when, when we were discussing this policy, you know, it talked about nutrition and your physical health and all of that, but there was nothing in the policy that talked about mental health. And so, I know Karen said that she was kind of starting to, um, wall rolling with Chad, but I guess I was curious, when the policy was created, you know, how come there wasn't a mental people involved in that? I think now more than ever, there's like all the mental health issues. You know, regardless of your age, you're seeing a lot. And so I would, I feel quite strongly that that is something that should be added into our policy. Just if they're talking about a person as a whole, obviously that.
And Karen was going to get you some information on that, or she was going to do some research, so you have to wait there some time.
The rest of the committee, you know, we didn't, they're like.
I think I can speak to that a little bit. When the wellness policy came out from M S B A at that time, and then of course, Wellness Committee, and you had, you know, which our, our policy is much. and you had, you know, which our, our policy is much, um, much wider than the MSBA policies. Okay? And so MSBA had a policy on wellness, which was very general. But we also have counseling support type policies. So you've got a little bit of crossing over of, okay, is this through wellness? Which, or is this through with counseling services and what else not? Which are their MSBA policies? So it'll be a good thing for, that will be a really good thing for the committee to be able to look at, because of seeing all of the different policies.
I guess the other, aside from that, when the students, actually, the fact teacher, she basically said that the district is really kind of ticked off everything of their case. She seems really drained and that they're, that it's kind of more of a struggle. They need to be, it's enraged, now whether that's just because their first grade, or it's just, it's just that it's hard to teach a course because you can't use the lab in person, you know, longer. She's submitting resumes and all that, all of them. So she said that that's just been something that she's worked with. And also, the two seniors said that, that they're actually, whether it's them or it's other kids in their class, that they're not, that they are enjoying the distance learning. And, you know, they're kind of, it's difficult when it's always changing. And so we, it was at least a couple of people that we've probably said that they would prefer to stay, you know, in distance learning, and that all of them just really want to graduate. So that might be what it's about.
Anybody else have any queries?
The only thing, we did go to do the case one, face four, and it's canceled virtually.
I thought it went really well, but I kind of was wondering how long Earth is making it. So we can talk to people, or, you know, I just know how that was going to work. But I thought it would be seen more than I expected.
It's a good reminder, almost, there is, you know, what's going to happen.
Makes a lot more sense to second check.
I was hoping it would.
I know, when we went with you two, Amy and I were like, we know this, we've heard these terms before. I'm glad you heard what I'll, and thank you guys for doing that with me, it's cool.
Can I do it separate or not?
Friends and experts. I just want to talk quickly about our superintendent search. Everybody in the D G F school district should have received this postcard this weekend. Did everybody get theirs? Everybody get theirs? And I just want to point out a couple of things. MSBA is conducting listening sessions this Wednesday morning is for the D G F staff at seven thirty in the morning. Community members, it's Thursday evening, December seventeenth at six P M. If you would like your request form to be admitted to this virtual session, please visit our website and look under the superintendent search link, or call one of the offices, someone will help direct you to the form, and we will send you a Google Meet link. Also, there's a survey that you can go online and fill out. It's five short, open-ended questions. And the online survey can also be found on our school district's website under superintendent search. And hard copies of the survey are available in the district office or website opposite. This is, deadline to submit is December twenty eighth. Thank you to Tracy for working on this. We had a few conversations on the phone because I'm confusing via email, but I appreciate her taking this. After writing, I'm like, I think I'm confusing myself, so. Thank you, Miss, we can still pick up the phone, call people.
Did we get our invitation, or do we have to sign another?
No, we got an invite today, it was revised.
I thought we did, but I can't remember.
The time was revised, nine.
Yeah.
And I think, I sent the board members, both the staff and the community, in case you want to go.
Yeah.
Well, when I, when I click on going and it says yes, and then it says error. I thought, oh, they moved me out already?
That's why you're emailing me, can I still attend the session?
That's definitely our...
Well, we'll get it figured out by Thursday, I'm going to hit on it. So, all right, other than that, six point four superintendent report.
Okay, I'll take my mask down just because I can officially do that. Couple of meetings that we need to get scheduled. One is for construction. So talking with Lee and Matt, so Lee from GLG and Matt from Comstock. And our admin cabinet with them, what we can have built. We sat down, we went through all of the construction. And as you may recall, we're at a crunch point where, all right, what are the essential things that must get done if we're going to actually transfer kids for the fall? And we are, you know, bottom line is, we don't think we can do it. And it's more realistic, that's what I'm calling twenty-two. So we still don't have, as of last Friday, GLG was sending in the answers to mid package two at Dilworth. As of last Friday, we still didn't have mid package two for Linden from the state. So you can kind of see what's happening as we're getting delayed and delayed and delayed. And I spent about an hour on, on a conference meeting with Brandon from Morad and about winter construction costs. And when you talk about concrete, or asphalt, or any of that, you gotta have these plants running. And that isn't cheap. So Morad even shut down back in October. Nobody knew it was going to be a nice November. And, you know, so we had a long conversation about that. But bottom line is to have, so that GLG and Comstock can sit and have a conversation with the board about, look, here's everything we've learned from all of the admin cabinet. These are the essential parts that must be in place to make this transition happen. As an example, you can't do a mid-year on the, let's say, the middle school science area that has to be done at Linden, which means you gotta blow up the elementary, blow up the fine arts, you gotta blow up the elementary gym, you gotta do all these different things, okay? And then to be able to have the fourth grade classrooms already at Dilworth, which is where the middle school science is right now, that's not going to happen over a Christmas. And so if you're going to be using those facilities leading up to it, mid-year is not going to work. So you either have to have it ready for the fall, or you wait until the next fall. And so we spent time as a, as a cabinet, just what are all the essential things that must be in place to make this move? And then we also had a conversation about the fact that there's a lot of stress out there right now, the staff and everybody else, just because we got the COVID issue. And by the way, you've had so much fun this year, get ready and be ready to move all stuff in there. So it's not really realistic. So the task that Matt at Comstock is at is put together what it would look like on the timeline if we have a fall two thousand twenty-two. Let's have a work session about, let's talk about what that would be. And, and the cost difference, because we were talking two hundred thousand plus just for the winterization for this winter to get things done. And then what would you lose on that extra money? All of a sudden, do you lose the science area at the high school? So it's, it's an important conversation. We're looking at either, next week is out. And I didn't want to try to do this in the novel, as I said last night. I thought it's easier to talk about it here, let's get this thing locked in. So it was either Thursday or anytime during the day, Friday. It sounds like you guys got a lot going on on Thursday night with meetings. So would you, would you prefer having, again, if you can't make it, we're going to record it so that anybody who can't make it can still see everything that was going on with it? General thoughts, because I got to get that scheduled right away tomorrow and then get the invite sent out.
There's a name for sure not in Friday morning, if, you know, if you could do like a ten o'clock. And several people have to work for me to not be available, but if you can record it.
We will record it automatic. And that way we'll have the admin cabinet, they can, they can be also providing some insight into, this is why this has got to be in place. We went back and forth about, there is absolutely no way they could have both gyms ready. That is impossible. And we talked about the importance of the entrances, period, for this is all that. If we're going to do this, number one, let's not do it, let's not rush things and then all of a sudden go, God, we should not have done that. Anybody who's talked through this stuff, you can't rush that. Because you're going to pay more money for it and it's not going to be as efficient.
Just for the public that's watching, just to let them know, you know, this is good of COVID.
This is definitely good of COVID.
We cannot get these permits done, the state, everything is backed up. It's disappointing, right, until we last Monday night, and I could see the disappointment in his face, but then we talk about, do we lose if we, if something comes, do we lose three, four hundred thousand dollars and we can't do something that's best for kids? You know, I told him, I said, I feel your frustration and I understand, you know, the disappointment for staff and for the kids, but we need to do it right. And, you know, hopefully be able to sustain our money and get what's done, you know, what we want to get done. So, very frustrating.
It is.
But we're all going to come back, Sandy's going to come back, Airbus is going to come back, and we're going to be happy about that building in fall of twenty twenty-two.
I have, I have, I have tried to go through every flip of Brian, trying to figure out at night. It's like, you know, and I'll send Lee an email and, and that, an email. And of course, they send it to me at six thirty in the morning, which I'm sleeping by that point. Because, you know, I will go back and forth on this, trying to figure out, is there any way possible? And in the end, it's, it's like, this is, this doesn't make sense. Let's do this right. Let's get it figured out. There's a lot of stress going on with everybody right now, and like, I, I don't see that as being a bad thing right now with the COVID situation. So, you know, it's, it's a lesser of evils right now with it. So Friday, if I set up for ten o'clock Friday, how many could make it for the ten o'clock Friday? I know not everybody can.
Really? I mean, is it, is it virtual or?
It'll be virtual. It'll be virtual, that way they can bring in whomever else they can, you know, it'll make it easier for them to try to lock in somebody coming in at ten thirty, talk about this or that. And again, we'll record the whole thing. So if you're working, you're going to have it in the first place, and then we can follow up with conversations on it. So I will plan on confirming that, so we'll go ten o'clock Friday morning. Okay, second meeting. Fiscal personnel, and we're not going to do it afterwards tonight. We can do it anytime that works out for, let's see, it's Laura, David, and...
Sandy, myself, I need to...
Not Laura, Nancy.
You know, Sandy for two more weeks. How many more meetings can we get in four years?
So is there a particular, you know, I'm looking at thirty to forty-five minutes, which in Brian time means an hour, two hours, fifteen minutes or so. But either tomorrow night or Wednesday, it could be late afternoon. What would work for the three of you?
I don't give a little either name.
Tomorrow night or Wednesday? Yeah, either night.
Sandy? No, that would be a better name.
Yeah.
So if I, if I get a six o'clock? Okay. So just so you know...
Is it virtual?
Yes.
Okay, because I just gave up my computer, so I hope to be on.
We will.
We'll be able to help you.
So to just let you know, some of the topics include, so I can give an update on where we're at on the district office process, how you're reading and what else not. Just so that, you know, publicly, everybody knows, we've been exhausted trying to figure out what are our different options. Jeannie, Cindy, Brooke, and then just outstanding, all taking on extra duties, trying to make this work during this transition time. Cindy's willing to help out until maybe March first. Same thing with, with Jeannie, so we're, we're trying to figure out how can we, and believe me, I have, I have done the guilt trip with Brooke, trying to, to the point of where she has texted me or emailed me at five or six o'clock and more, two different mornings, because she's felt so bad and been up all night as I've been trying to talk around the different things. Because I know Brooke is really, really good at like what she does, she can do so many of these jobs. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of stress with some of this stuff. So, and anyway, so district office, some of the long-term plans that we might be able to do with the health office, as far as some expansion. In particular, as we look at going to birth, or preschool to grade four and grades five to twelve in the two different buildings. And then the third area is with maps. In particular, Brandon and I spent, you know, we, and we're meeting weekly, just trying to look at, what are some of the shared services that would make sense for the two school districts to be looking at? Whether it be the American Indian funding, achievement and integration, some of the staff development. I mean, if we're truly going to be doing things with the career cabinet, we should be doing some joint staff development work in preparation of that. Curriculum alignment, again, we've got to have this, we've got to make sure that these departments that all of our kids at either school district are ready for. So, you know, there, there's a lot of work to do. And we're talking about following up meetings with committees from the two school boards of the two school districts sitting down, talking about this, how we do the shared services, how we look at the billing, the whole financial process of the career, you know what I mean? I think Wayne and Heidi can both attest, and we've been excited when we look at curriculum coming. I mean, we're talking about whether it be in the trades, looking at C D L, looking at railroad, looking at electrical plumbing, all of these things. And then what else in the medical fields, you know?
Health, business, technology.
It's just so, there's so, and, and these things are ready to be lined up for curriculum and classes starting next fall. So there's work that has to be done, and we got to make sure that we're up to speed on this. To have this, to have our curriculum ready, that the kids are ready for these courses, because this is going to be there. We're talking about articulation agreements with colleges, and we're going after apprenticeship work so that kids can actually be in the trades, going through apprenticeship programs, taking the OSHA safety courses, and then being able to work on-site on these jobs, which they normally can't do until they're eighteen. So now all of a sudden, they can be in an apprenticeship program, which is a three-year type of program, and they can get that particular level in place. So it's exciting. I mean, it's stuff that, God, we've been, we've talked about this for a long time. And so, you know, I'd love to see this one through, but I won't. But this is exciting. I, I, as you can tell, I, I'm keyed up to see this thing moving forward. Couple other things, and again, we just want to talk about it in the public meeting. So that people understand, part of the reason, we know that the COVID numbers are going in the right direction right now. They continue going in the right direction. We've gone from, I believe, two hundred and twelve quarantined. We've gone from, I believe, 212 quarantined between our approximately 1,600 students and 200 staff members, uh, a couple of weeks ago, to the point now we're down to 50 to 60 quarantine with all of that. And to the point of 24 positive cases down to five. And now it looks like we down to close to zero. Talked to, uh, somebody today that told me West Fargo, zero. That's a huge disparity to be down to zero. So to see it coming that direction, you know, you know, those are just great signs. We're going hybrid with the middle school and the, uh, high school this week and next week. And it's a combination, it's, it's the numbers, but it's also getting the kids back, having the conversations with the kids. We've got kids that are struggling, struggling with their grades, what else else? We need to do a, we need to be aggressively having conversations with students and with the families about what they need to do to make sure that we don't have kids with failing grades on their transcripts. Particularly when they're in ninth and 10th grade, that affects them the next two, three years, two, three years later. That depends on us also. So we have to take ownership of that. Uh, the MDA update and the H update, uh, I think everybody's aware that they changed the requirements on COVID quarantine times. Um, and that went out, uh, on Thursday, I believe Tuesday sent that out. Uh, we've done that in cooperation. I meet every Wednesday. Now, um, 9:30 I meet with the health department, uh, and, you know, that means Beth is an LPM and with Kayla as an RN, I meet with them at 9:30, I meet with the admin cabinet at 10 o'clock. Uh, we do that every Wednesday. I meet with, uh, Clay County Public Health every Friday. I meet with all the superintendents every Thursday. So we have coordination going on region, um, just trying to track all of it. Um, so you know about construction update, uh, bit pack two, let's see, um, we're supposed to be getting the London report this week, uh, Excel. Uh, we're supposed to have, Matt is trying to set up a meeting with them. Uh, it sounds like we've got two different bills that may be coming on that one, so we need to sit down. And so I told Matt, and we need, uh, Ronnie and I will be available to do that. So they're gonna try to get that meeting set up.
I talked to next week, maybe, or with you?
Next week, I think it's gonna be next week. That's it.
Anybody have any questions since we've gotten to a part here, we sent out a survey?
Yeah, I'm wondering, well, that survey, yeah, I'm a good little bit.
So a survey I have about, until this morning, about 100, middle of the afternoon, about 150 back so far. Um, they have till Friday. I would say just rough estimate, I didn't calculate them all, but just reading through this, it looks like about, out of the 150, about 85% of them, I would say, you know, I'm saying they're on four days. Um, but of course, I don't have, what, 150 more than that?
Well, I got it, I'm looking at response, about 164 response, 87.8% want the onset.
That's just interesting, Chris O'Pardik called me on Friday, something, this survey was coming on, and I, I asked my son who's a sophomore about it, and he said, you know, there are days where he has five kids in his class, like a day, and he's the most people in a class were nine kids. You know, there's a lot more kids that are deciding to go the distance route and I guess if, then the numbers are gonna be that low up here for people that want to come and get four days of instruction, I support it.
That's kind of the welfare of the whole thing, is knowing how many want to do that. I know they want consistency, we switched that today, uh, with a consistent daily schedule. Uh, and we're planning for more help, they need that absolutely. Um, four days a week, if we can do it, I think we can do it. Um, we, we created a policy, but. No, I know they don't like to flip them back and forth. I can't, we, we can't say we can't, because it's something we'll, we'll have to at certain times probably, but. If we can get them here more frequently, the better, I mean, the whole plan.
Just the check-ins, you're looking for the face-to-face?
Face-to-face, uh, we've been struggling, kids that are struggling, we have more, yeah, it's than we've ever had. Especially their freshmen and sophomores, Brian would do that. That's getting back them all the way through being creative, if you will, get on right now.
So if kids are saying, if their parents are watching right now, because they're saying, oh, it's not a big deal, it is a big deal.
Yep, it absolutely is.
And we don't.
So I, and I think it would help, I, I know there are, I mean, you can see the results, there are those that are a little bit nervous, you have always. And we're here more for the, there are those that are, they are successful with distance learning. There are those cases too, so there are, there are those that just want to do that. Seniors in particular, they're a lot more, more interested in staying home instead of just because they're starting. Maybe with that senior slide, yeah, I mean, yeah. But our freshmen and sophomores, we need to get out there.
Um, it was an interesting phone call when you called, I'm like, oh, that, you know?
You know, and weirdly, isn't that the, the, the thing we just switched that over to the relative time, that's where the purpose of that is more contact, I'm with the kids, give them a little while one time, try to help them out, whatever their needs are. Same with the Wednesday mornings, that's the same thing, Brian mentioned it too, we're trying to reach out as much as we can, whether it's emails or phone calls, parent calls, parent emails, mobile meetings. If we can get more face time, hopefully with that.
We will, we will use whatever funds we need, we've had, we've had great, I think, great brainstorming discussions about the fact that, why don't we, you know, let's look at, look at a space like this. When you've got kids that maybe they're, while we're in hybrid, if they have to be, and they want to come in when they're on their distance days. And they can still come in, they can park there, come in this door and be able to come in and use the devices, have the internet. And looking at, let's get a hold of the colleges, let's check on all the graduates, let's get more people that are coming in to teach it. Let's use the COVID funds to be able to bring those people in to help with tutoring. They're going in to teach it in the first place, so we gotta look at those things during the day, at night, whatever it takes, be able to get more support, so.
So you're, four days a week, you're talking in-person like the elementary, right?
So that would, what I'm saying is we wouldn't have a blue and silver group. We would just bring as many as we could fit in to fit capacity, those four days.
Yeah, so it's the creative part is how much capacity you have to fit in.
So we'll get the results back by Friday and then, uh, Christmas break, we'll be figuring out how we can fit it away in the building. And what would, I mean, the greatest thing that I do is the same thing back in August. By period, you have to look at, uh, say your math classes, maybe we can, to have, to have 20 students in that room and we have 25 that want to be in there. I may have to move that class to a different location. So by period, we'll, we'll just have to be creative more.
So theory, you may keep some that want distance learning, still do a distance learning.
Yeah, we would still have both models, not at the same time.
And that's where people are going to be adaptable, because we have some classrooms that have 1,000 square feet. All we got, we have to put the bigger classes in there. We've got kids that want to be here, let's move them into those spaces. And that may mean that sometimes staff have to move.
Right, it's not about them, it's about the kids.
Exactly, so, yeah, that's gonna happen.
The capacity, are they, where does that stem from? I mean, is that from the governor's order or is it from the Department of Education?
If you go hybrid, if you go hybrid, then you, you're talking with 50%. You know, you've got six foot, it's one of the reasons we've stayed as much as we can with the elementary into the direct, because we've got certain requirements as long as we're direct. And then, believe it or not, it changes, so I go hybrid, now all of a sudden, we gotta go to the 50%, which is worse in a lot of cases than six foot issue. So, you know, it's, it's, it's why we, you know, we've got, trying to keep the kids here as much as possible for what we can in the size of the rooms.
But when we were talking about this, we're not talking about going direct with high school and middle school.
We don't have, we, we don't have the capability of going direct six through 12 with our spaces. Any?
Yeah, well, I just, I think one thing, I think there used to be some confusion probably in the community in why the high school and why the middle school, why it's different. So we have 170 distance learners all time, six through 12 right now as of today. About 130 of those are high schools. So really, I only have 40, um, at the middle school that are distance learners. And I can fit about 12 to 13 kids with the six feet capacity in the middle school classrooms. Okay, so those cohorts have to stay involved in that. So what we, the data said is that, um, if you have students with special education services, they're the first round that you wanna bring in for, for a day at 48. So we've done that round and we're still working on a couple of those with the most participants. So we are looking to fill those 40 spots that we have about. Um, we can't give away, so somebody might say, well, um, Mom, Dad, I only have seven kids in my class today. Yes, that there might be four of those that are quarantined and are gonna be back in a week. So I can't give those spots away, but the slots are open because of those distance learners, which we feel like this is gonna stabilize a little bit now. We're working on a tiered system, um, where we are looking at data, we're gonna first, we're identifying a group of kids and then we're gonna look at kids that maybe have had different circumstances, whether it's failed grades, um, spotty internet, uh, social emotional needs that we're gonna look at and offer those spots to those kids first. And that's the way we've gone, uh, with pop going, we think that's just the best next step. Um, we, we wanna keep again, as many kids in four days a week as we can, but we have to start somewhere and that's the process that we're, we're looking at. Because we don't have as many open because they have more distance learners. That makes sense?
Yeah.
And then we don't have as much flexibility because every single day, we have 18 or 12 classrooms and they're pretty much for the day, they're full. Whereas you maybe have some bit classrooms and you can switch people around. And Joe and I are completely full over at that element, that building, building I created in the middle school, so not as much flexibility with the space either.
I feel like those rooms too are smaller.
They are.
School footage, especially where that middle school is.
Yeah, yeah, some of them are, maybe some, uh, classrooms that were used for middle school, that maybe were designed for that, and they're by the most of the things, so. Our hope is just to fill it up too and we're gonna, we started the identification process, now we're gonna, we'll do that next year. Kind of like, uh, our response intervention model, where you first start with the first level, it goes down, and then we'll go to the next and keep filling in, so. So it's gonna, kind of be selected and, and helps for us, there's as a, kind of font we're gonna build with it.
Well, we appreciate everybody looking at, please to get the kids back in, especially those that need the services, maybe need that face-to-face. Like you've got the internet or social mobile or your special ed kids, you know, um, this isn't enjoyable for anybody, so. We appreciate the hard work, I see everybody's faces, I think everybody's ready for Christmas vacation, so. You guys all need some R and R, hopefully, and week off of COVID numbers. So just to, just to point out to the public, the communication that came out from Brian is that the week after, uh, the week after certification gets done, everybody will be in distance mode except the elementary, correct? Elementary will be in person?
Elementary, we're gonna continue staying direct, just as, as it's been.
And then the, the middle school, high school, that first week back, certification will be in distance mode.
And, and we, we understand that people want to see it more in a two-week type of, but again, the reason right now we're just planning on the one week is the numbers haven't been very good. And if we see all that first week, if all of a sudden you see that it's coming back again, then we may have to go distance within a second week, but across the region, it's been, uh, pretty much that everybody is planning on one week. That gets us to the 11th, have the kids back with the new changes in the quarantine that works extremely well because of the 10 days. So with the reduction of that, and with most people looking at that your big events dates could probably be New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and by the 11th, you've done with that 10 days, so that's why we're planning for it that way.
Sounds good, any other questions, board members, Brad? All right, um, 7.1 approval of the minutes. Now, we need to make amendment to this, uh, due to our board bills, how do we want Amy to write that up? Just with amendment to the treasurer?
Change, change the amount of claims, whatever the new number is.
Mary, you're ready, and Sandy, is that the new number for you?
Okay, Sandy, okay, um, 337,120 dollars and 7 cents.
All right, we have a motion to approve that amendment. David, is there a second?
I'll second.
I got Amy over here, things running. Any other questions, anything else we need to change, all those in papers, say aye. Aye. Post motion period, 6-0. Consent agenda, claims and accounts, oh, sure, I'll take the November bills and consent agenda, I think we should just probably approve it. Change the.
I'll, I'll take it both, please.
You wanna take it both, please? You wanna re, um, say that number again, Sandy, on the November one, I'm sorry.
Okay, 337,120 dollars and 7 cents.
Three?
337? 337,120 dollars and 7 cents.
And then the December bills? All right.
All these not done.
All right, also included in your board packet is the trending report, a fund pool report, Minnesota liquid asset, NAC account activity report, and they have a donation for Paul Weyland, and they now have 12 barbells to use in his school weight room. His son Troy passed away this fall and, um, he donated in the fund, so thank you, Paul. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Sandy, is there a second? Second by Laura, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Post motion period. All right, certified final levy, 9.1. Um, this is for the, certify the final levy and the amount, uh, the dollar amount, do we have that over there, Sandy, do you have that?
It could be in the spot, right, just 4 million, 31.
Oh, that one, okay.
307,75, sound great.
Okay, so, 4 million, oh, 31,307 dollars and 75 cents. Cable, that's the 2020 cable, 2020, 2021 levy. We have a motion. Motion by Ronnie, is there a second? Second by Amy, any discussion? Period on discussion, all those in papers, say aye. Aye. Post motion period. 9.2, this is an extra board bill, uh, bills check run, uh, this is something we do every year, uh, this is to start doing extra check run on December 30th for the fiscal year 21 bills. We have a motion. I have Sandy first, uh, second? Second by Amy, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, post. 9.3 legislative leave request, um, it's in your packet here, Mr. Mark Corks, um, this is to approve his legislative leave as requested, and now Brian, Eric, were you saying that he was gonna change it a little bit because it's gonna be virtual for him? Or is he gonna be gone the whole semester?
We have the, assuming we have the latest one in.
January 18th.
January 18th will be perfect.
Okay.
Because what he's doing is he's finishing up the semester, because they're going virtual for their meetings up until that point. And then starting the second semester, then he'll be off.
Okay.
Are they in special session today, that we can follow or not?
Um, I don't know, I'd not for.
All right, so would we motion to approve that? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any further discussion? So there's the long term stuff for Paul. That's typically how it's worked in the past.
Actually, what we've been able to do is we have someone that we hired, it used to be that we had to hire, do some hiring for a person. And what's happened is we have someone who, the individual who was doing the long-term, something the second semester. We hired first semester also, so he just goes into the lead, but we don't have to hire somebody else, because we already had that first, first semester. So we added a half-time position probably four or five years ago, I suppose. Works out extremely well for us right now.
All right, great question. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion period. Nine point four, it's just the resolution establishing my polling places is something we do every year and Amy loves to read this. Yes, uh, we have, we have a motion. A motion by David, is there a second? Second by Sandy.
Pursuant to U. Call and notice thereof, the regular meeting of school board of independence district number twenty-one sixty-four, Dillard's Land Felt Public Schools, was held in said school district on December fourteenth, twenty-twenty at six P. M. All school board members were present. Member David Iletson introduced the following resolution and moved to its adoption. Resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during municipal polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide election. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district twenty-one sixty-four stated Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section two oh five A eleven, the precincts of polling places for school district elections are those precincts and parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in and or in our middle school district. The board hereby confirms these, those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section two oh five A eleven, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of the statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a municipality. Following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day of the statewide election. Precinct number one, Dillard Community Center, seven oh nine First Avenue Northwest, Dillard, Minnesota five six five two nine. This combined polling place serves all territory in the city of Dillard and Morbid Township. Precinct one that is located in the Dillard's Land Felt District, twenty-one sixty-four. Precinct number two, Blenheim Community Center, two twelve Perkins Avenue, Blenheim, Minnesota five six five oh seven. This combined polling place serves all territory of the city of Blenheim, Spring Prairie Township, Oma Township, Blenheim Township, Burgerton Township, Elmwood and Elton Township, that is located in Dillard's Land Felt Public District, district twenty-one sixty-four. Precinct number three, Felt Community Center, two fifty three six street, Felt, Minnesota five six five three six. This combined polling place serves all territory in the city of Felt, Boeing Township, Orkin, Biding, Felton, Craynes, Pagan, Keene and Georgetown Townships, that is located in the Dillard's Land Felt Public District, twenty-one sixty-four. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section two oh five A oh nine, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the same day of the statewide election, two hours of seven o'clock A. M. in the A. P. M. The clerk is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor. Of each of the county in which the school district is located in or in public in thirty days after its adoption. As required by Minnesota statute section two oh four B sixteen, subdivision one A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of the polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district. The school district polling place location that has been changed. The notice must be non-foreverable, notice mailed at least twenty-five days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. A notice that is returned undeliberate must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor, who shall change the registrant status to challenge in the statewide registration system. The motion for the adoption of this resolution was duly seconded by Sandy Cocke and upon voting taken thereon, the following voting will favor this resolution.
Thank you. The motion by David, the second by Sandy, this will be a roll call vote, Laura. David?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Myself, I, Sandy?
Aye.
And run.
Aye.
Motion period.
Hopefully, we will not have to do.
Okay, let's see, nine point five, this is a, um, winter extracurricular contracts. Um, as you can see, these are all for assistant coaches, ninth grade, seventh, eighth grade coaches for boys basketball, girls basketball, wrestling, dance line, knowledgeable, one act, three act, play, speech, debate, national arts society, and theme. We have a motion to approve. Motion by Sandy, is there a second? Second by Amy, any discussion? During our discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion period. All right, nine point six is the vestriol tech hiring. Um, and this is going to be for Kevin Ellingson. Do we have a, do you have a contract with him? It's just all read out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wayne, what's the latest update? We talked three, three periods?
Uh, three periods, uh, three periods of prep, half prep.
So it will be a halftime position for semester.
Kevin Ellingson.
And then what tier role at B then?
Uh, it's up seven.
B A?
B A seven.
We need, the, the name is like so familiar.
Yeah, they're, the family grew up in Blenheim.
He graduated in ninety-five, graduated with Amy and Ronnie's boys. I'm just thrilled that there's this opportunity for kids and reading that course description, that's pretty cool, from the three D training and that kind of stuff.
What grade would that, would he be teaching it for or approve the tape files?
Nine through twelve. Nine through twelve today.
Thank you. So, um, we have a motion. So, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nine point seven, non-certified contract for Sam Jamowski. Food services, um, fifteen cent a hour effective December first, twenty-twenty. We have a motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion period. Nine point eight, world's best workforce summary report. This is, um, the report that was sent in by Virgo and me on the detail exposure, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Um, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nine point nine, non-certified contract for Marzia Olson, her professional, effective December fourteenth, twenty-twenty. We have a motion. Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by David. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion period, six zero. All right, future board, um, comments or agenda items. On our agenda here, we will be having a special meeting on Monday, January fourth. Everybody puts this in their calendar at five thirty. That will be our reorganization meeting because we meet with Barb at six o'clock. So we will, um, that evening, and she's gonna be going over the survey results. And, um, the listening sessions with us at six. So at five thirty, we'll have our new school board members, the whole Reno and Brittany Keel to their office. Go on to elections of officers, and then we'll adjourn and go right into working at six o'clock at work, so. All right, any questions?
We won't do the committee?
We won't do, we won't do the committees till later in January, yeah. Probably not even, I'm not even sure, well, probably the first meeting the next week, probably, I suppose. Because we would typically be down at MSBA that first weekend in January, and then we'd come back and then have our reorganization meeting, so. All kind of fucked up, but, you know, maybe after that meeting with Barb, I'll email all of your current board members to look at your committees that you're currently on. See if you're still interested in, in that committee, if there's something that you're interested in. And then we'll go from there and then plug any board members in from that. That's kind of, how I see it, potentially going since we won't be down at MSBA together. And then today in the mail, I'm not sure if you guys got it or not, but there was like a, like a kind of pamphlet, pamphlet that was, uh, put together by MSBA just going over what the talks will be each Thursday morning. When I had read it and I initially told you guys, I thought you picked one Thursday. Well, they're gonna have sessions each Thursday morning, but since we are registered, we can watch them anytime. So you would be able to watch it on any day, and if there was a class that you wanted to attend and you go on the MSBA website, probably gonna have to use your school, um, email and your password to get in, but, I mean, at least they're giving us that option, so, but.
Did you, did we get our dates for all of January from Barb last time, or somebody got them that they can email?
Yeah, do you want me to email them all? I can email our base that we picked out. I think that's our one, and then I think we just have that first one on January.
I got the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, we have one on the twenty-fifth. Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we have our interviews. So yeah, so January. Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, email you, Ronnie. Um, January fourth, we'll have that special meeting at six. That's board meets for interview training and to discuss interview question and procedure. So she's gonna go over the, the results of the survey and then training on how we do interviewing.
Does MSBA send, send out the invite or?
Um, Barb, Barb and for that January fourth meeting?
Well, for any of those, yeah, for any of those meetings that are with MSBA.
Um, Barb and help do it together.
Okay.
Yeah, we're handled that. And then she, she gets Jake involved. You guys just take care of it. I email and say. Take care of this.
We'll figure it out.
Um, the application deadline is for the community, our application deadline for our superintendent position is January eleventh. And then, um, the MSBA starts their initial screening process. Yep. And then January twenty-fifth, we will have a special meeting, and then the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we have interviews. I will email you.
I thought there was some time between that, that we also look at the candidates.
She had said on that one meeting that we would be able to view, and it'll be different because of COVID and stuff, that we will be able to view everything virtually from home. And it would be a, what did she say? It was like a secure. Yeah, something like that.
Sure she'll notice a lot of forward, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's what we have going on. And then our next board meeting is Monday, January eleventh at six P. M. in the Minnesota Media Center. And we are gonna greatly miss Sandy. But we're so excited for you. Every Monday night, I'm gonna have to call you the first Monday night. Say, what are you cooking? And it's not Arby's. Or whatever you usually get on the way home from work, so. Uh, yeah, any other thing we need to discuss or make mention on? So. Our rate is seven thirty-seven. We need to.
I want to thank everyone who's been on the board and our board members.
Unless something really makes sense, and then I got a national, I'm crying. Oh, really? What am I gonna say? I want to say, I mean, no. So we're excited for you, but we're sad for us. But we're all having cake. We have to be over here as well. He's upset with you, and then when we were visiting a year ago, six months ago or whatever, I think when it'd be done, I'm like, you're not gonna be done.
I was gonna try to get a sign really before they watch.
Yeah. No go.
Decided no.
No go, Ronnie.